Milton, the floor is yours for public comment.
Yes, what did you say? Say, I'm sorry, Mr. I can say it, did you say?
Yes, please.
Okay, I just had two things and I'm trying to keep it short. I was invited to the public forum in Glassonberry, Republican car discussion thefts because of all the thefts they're having. And I went, it lasted for three hours in Glassonberry. You had two minutes to speak and when they wanted to, the next person, there was over 200 people there. And basically, they were blaming our representatives at the legislature for the laws need to be changed. Now, we're talking about just for minors. This isn't for adult discussion. This is just minors in Glassonberry. Example, shots fired in a theft of vehicle at somebody's house. The theft of vehicle has been over 101 stolen vehicles so far in Manchester this year because there was a representative from Rocky Hill in Manchester there also. It goes on and on for, I'm not going to go any farther, but just I was just trying to give you an idea of some of the crimes. And also, the emphasis was that our legislators aren't doing their job. I called our representative and see if she, how she voted on the police legislation that just came in. I talked to her assistant, he said she never, she didn't show up. She was absent, I can't, I'm told absentee. So I just wanted, was trying to get her opinion on it. But so that's, that's what's going on. If you wanted, I have a three-page typewritten list of notes that I took, which is nowhere near all the different items that were discussed.
It would be great if you could share that with Jim Rupert.
Jim Rupert, I can send it to Jim Rupert, sure.
And it just so happens, Milton, that Trooper Contenta dropped by Town Hall to welcome us back, but I'm the only one here. So for Contenta, do you have any comments about those youth crimes?
Yes, I'm very familiar with that incident in Glassonberry with the shots fired at the lady when she tried to stop the kids from stealing the vehicle. That also happened in Oxford where they shot at the homeowner who tried stopping them from stealing their vehicle. And yes, we're getting vehicles stolen on a nightly basis. And the state police are also, you know, with locals as well, are catching these kids numerous times a week. But again, because of policy and procedure and with the new police bill, there are new guidelines that we have to follow. And I'd be always happy to sit down and talk with you on a one-on-one basis as far as what we kind of can't do and why we do practice these policies. I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk with you about it.
Thank you, Brian. You had another point you wanted to make.
Yes, I was, I'm just not going into detail on this. I can send over my notes on this and I'll send it to the state trooper plus yourself, or no, to Jim Rupert, sorry, Jim Rupert. The other point that I wanted to make is I was, I didn't read all of it, but I read heard on the charter commission that was sent to the Board of Selectmen. And then I don't believe it's come up yet about the Economic Development Commission. That's one of the reasons I went there, by the way. I'm the only one left on the Economic Development Commission, even though I understand three people have expressed an interest in being added. And there's no action being taken. Now, I'm still participating by going to the Talon County, I'm on there by my, I pay my own dues, Talon County Chairman, Talon County Commission. So what bothers me, there's a lot going on. I sent, when we were in session at our full complement, we used to send our notes to the Town Hall. And one of the things that we sent was copies of the minutes from like Coventry, Talon, Mansfield, okay? Which all of their economic development commissions are in place and they have a very long and significant agenda. And what they're discussing and they're very active. Now, I'm aware of you and going to the four-town Economic Development Commission. But what you're discussing there is important and I'm not, I agree with it. But that's, if you look at the minutes of the Economic Development Commission, there's a whole different array of areas that are being discussed. And I just, that's why I sent copies of the minutes to you. So I just want to make it clear before I miss a meeting that Bolton definitely needs, in my opinion, I'm known to vote, but needs an Economic Development Commission. I basically served as chairman of a couple of major commissions in town. And I do it as a volunteer. I'm a major landowner in town. I enjoy trying to stay involved with what's going on in town. But no one's explained to me yet, or did they ever ask for my opinion that the Charter Commission, that's the main thing I want to listen to. Nobody ever put me on the agenda there so I could express my views. And I've been on the commission now, starting my second term, and nobody.
Well, Milton, the Board of Selectmen accepted the report of the Charter Revision Commission at our, let's see, this is August, July meeting. And we began working on charter revision questions. I believe there will be eight individual questions. And you certainly have the ability to vote as you please and to encourage others to vote your opinions. The only restriction is that you cannot use any town resources for that lobbying. But you can use personal resources, personal emails, and you're certainly welcome to do so.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I don't need to use any town resources. I mean, I'm quick, you know, I got my own staff. I mean, we can, I can type, we can, I can get my opinion typed and all that. I don't need those kind of resources. And so I appreciate you letting me know that. I didn't know that. I can send a letter to the chairman, which I didn't particularly care for the makeup of the Charter Commission, by the way. I've been in management for over 50 years and size means there you don't need two attorneys on a small commission like that. What you need is a business person who would have been helpful to get a business point of view on some issue. But that's my opinion.
Milton, I also want to remind you that the minute the Board of Selectmen approved the Charter Commission's report, that commission has been dissolved. So.
I didn't know that either. Okay, I appreciate you telling me though.
Yeah, take a look at the minutes of our July meeting and you will get all of those details.
Okay, so it hasn't, they've approved their report, okay, I understand that part. But have they approved all those changes they're recommending? Has that been done or is that?
We have, we are currently working and later on in this agenda, we will be working on the questions. And the questions will be on the November 2020 election ballot.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, when you get to the, I'll just my last statement. When you get to the Economic Development Commission, I'd like to be able to give my opinion on it. And I'll be brief, but I'll also send something in writing, you know, just so you know, because I've been on it for several years. And I've also attended several of the other towns' Economic Development Committee. So I'm pretty well informed on how it works in other towns. And I've tried to share that.
Okay. Thank you, Milton.
That's the end of my comments.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. I know.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to make comment? Kim Welch.
Hello, everybody. I'm here tonight. My name is Kim Welch. I live at 51 Vernon Road in Bolton. I'm currently serving as Bolton's Lake Commissioner. And I just wanted to update all of you on the current lake conditions and concerns of residents based on the fact that we are currently in a blue-green algae bloom that is worsening as the days progress. And I just heard from Hillary, if any of you hadn't seen the email, Hillary's going to come out on Wednesday, August 4th, to do the next set of testing. And NEAR will get us those results soon if they have them. Yeah, the conditions are worsening and lake residents are concerned for several reasons. The biggest reason right now being that the bloom is occurring and the lake is closed to swimming this early in the season. And my inbox is exploding with questions about what our plans are. I realize it's early in the process to actually be making decisions about what our plans are in terms of treatment or not treatment and so forth regarding the blue-green algae bloom. But I just, again, wanted to share with you, I'm getting lots of questions about what our plans are. And I think we need to be thinking along those lines as a town also. So that's it. I appreciate the town's response last week and assistance in getting the Health District out so that we could expedite the monitoring process.
Thank you, Kim. My inbox is also full with lake residents asking what we are going to do. And at this point, I think you said it very well, we're still a little early in the process. And we continue to monitor it and we'll be taking appropriate action when we deem it the appropriate time.
Okay.
Those results on Thursday will either say that we're, if we really are worsening or that we're just slightly worsening because the, as you know, wind and water and rain or lack thereof can cause changes that may or may not adjust the counts of the blue-green algae.
Yeah, I can, in my layman's scientific experience, let you know that it's worsening. There's no question. We're seeing the surface blue-green algae. It's widespread. There's no question. You look at the water and go, and you did prior as well, but the blue-green was at a lower depth last week. Now it's all coming to the surface and visibly not nice looking. So there's no question that it's gotten worse. I have photographs. It's hard to photograph that because the particles are still so small, but they're clearly visible everywhere in the water right now. And more prevalent on the surface, which is what folks are used to seeing in a blue-green algae bloom. So right now, we're seeing what I would call the classic symptoms of the blue-green algae bloom. Last week wasn't so classic, but certainly still blue-green algae. So yeah, so I just want us to be mindful and informative for the residents so that we can put their minds and our minds in plan mode instead of panic mode. So once we determine, I think the determination will come, is it wise for us to treat or not? Is probably what the question's going to be. And we'll certainly rely on NEAR for assistance in that decision. But I again want to be as proactive as we can with the residents to put your inbox and my inbox to rest sooner than later. So yeah, so I just wanted to inform everyone as well that's here on the board of their current conditions. I haven't seen you guys in a while. It's been winter, it's been COVID and so forth. So we're watching and we're watching closely for you.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Any other member of the public who wishes to comment? Hearing none. I'm going to move on with the approval of the minutes. June 1st, 2020, 2021, rather, was a regular meeting.
Bob Moore, I'll get my voice back, sorry about that. Working with sinuses and a sinus headache, hope to make it through, but I'll move the adoption of those minutes.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kim Miller. Are there any additions or corrections? I did not see any moving on. Oh, sorry. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of July 21st as, I'm sorry, June 1st as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
I see five hands. That's Maura, Pierog, DePietro, Aramita, and Miller voting aye. No abstentions. Okay, next is June 21st, which is our special meeting. Is there a motion to accept these minutes as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mike Aramita. Is there a second?
Yeah, Bob Moore.
Seconded by Bob Moore. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand. That's ayes from Bob Moore, Pierog, Bob DePietro, Mike Aramita, and Kim Miller. So that's unanimous. Next are our minutes of July 12th, which was again, a special meeting. Oops, I missed July 6th, the regular meeting, sorry.
Yeah, I'll move the adoption of the minutes as presented.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. It's been moved by Maura, seconded by Miller. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of these minutes as presented?
Aye.
I will abstain. I wasn't there.
The ayes from Maura, Pierog, DePietro, Aramita, and an abstention from Miller. No nays. Those minutes are accepted. Moving on. I guess we busy last month. The special meeting of July 12th. This was again, a special meeting. And this is, was the, this was the vote of the charter. Milton, I steered you wrong. It wasn't our July, early July Selectmen's meeting. It was Monday, July 12th, when we accepted the Charter Revision Commission's report. So is there a motion to accept these minutes?
Yes, I'll move.
Bob Moore is there, seconded by Kim Miller. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike?
Abstention.
Mike is abstaining. Okay, so we have ayes from Bob Moore, Pierog, Bob DePietro, Kim Miller, abstention from Mike Aramita. The next is the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting of July 20th, 2021. This was the meeting that we decided, the first meeting after we decided we should have a transcript of the meeting rather than minutes. This was a short meeting, less than an hour, and we have 16 pages of transcript. We very quickly will outgrow our town clerk's record space if we continue to do this. So at some point during this meeting, I'm going to ask you to reconsider the transcript as opposed to detailed minutes. Is there a motion to accept the transcript as presented?
Yes, I'll move.
Been moved by Bob Moore. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Seconded by Kim Miller. Any additions or corrections? I did listen to about 20 minutes of the tape and Kathy did an excellent job in transcription, even to my ums and ahs. Hearing, Bob DePietro.
Hey, I don't remember this at all. I don't know why. I just still remember voting in favor of the transcript I passed. I just don't. I have to revisit the minutes myself.
Okay, that's fair. So hearing note, go ahead, Bob Moore.
I think, I think Bob joined the meeting a little bit later when I started. That might be the issue. At my recollection.
Thank you.
The July 6th, I think it was the July 6th meeting.
It was.
Oh, sorry about that.
Didn't get the information to the minute taker for our July 12th meeting, who was a substitute. So all those in favor of accepting the transcript, which serves as our minutes for July 20th, please say aye.
I'll vote aye since it's a transcript.
Yep.
So Bob, I have ayes from Maura, Pierog, DePietro, Aramita, and Miller. There are no abstentions and no nays. All right, correspondence. We have a resignation letter from our current Recreation Director. Jim, do you want to fill the board in, please?
So Kylene Mike has been serving as our Recreation Director for a number of years. And as many of you know, she has a young child and a husband that works as a career firefighter and is constantly being kept after shift or called in for extra shifts. And that has made it very difficult for her family life. So she has made a decision to resign from her post and become a full-time mom, giving them the flexibility that they need, you know, for their family at this time. Kylene certainly will be a member of our staff that is missed. She's been a great member of our team for a number of years. Fortunately, we do have a young lady who is working as an assistant in that department. I met with her and her name is Stephanie, for those of you who may or may not know her. She's currently working both in the Recreation Department and in and at the Senior Center during Carrie's absence. She was hired as a shared position between the two. She has an educational background that lends her to this position and is willing to take this on on an interim basis so that she has the opportunity to see if she's a good fit for it and can learn and grow into the role from where she is at currently. I think it is the best solution we have at this point in time. And she's very enthusiastic about it. And I certainly make that recommendation that we go down that road. She and I are going to meet tomorrow to talk about the financial aspects of it. We've already talked about the responsibilities and some of the places where she's strongest, some of the places she's weakest, and how we as, you know, leaders in the team can help her learn and grow and fulfill the needs of the department. Any questions?
I have a question. What are top procedures for hiring full-time people to the Board of Selectmen, if any, role?
Not usually. Sometimes a member of the Board of Selectmen, if they have, you know, the right kind of background, will participate in a hiring committee. I've sat on a few interviews with Bob Moore before in the past. I think he's the only Selectman I've sat on a hiring panel with. Have I sat on one with you before, Sandy? I guess we'll see. I'm sorry, it must not have been one of those most memorable experiences, but.
I was hiring you.
Okay. Well, I guess I remember that conversation. But, and it's very much evolving the same way that I came into this role as the interim town administrator. You know, I think Stephanie really deserves this opportunity to prove herself. So you know, what we've preliminarily discussed is that, you know, we would like her to be able to stay in the role probably through January of this coming year because one of the areas that she's untested is with the budget process. And she's going to need our help to do that. But I think she's up to the task.
What is the implication for our payroll budget?
We'll get to that in a bit, but it looks like a potential savings, but not until August, the end of August, because Kylene had accrued vacation time.
Thank you.
And Jim will be talking dollars with Stephanie tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll have a better sense at our next meeting.
Sandy, any comments? Bob, just historically, the town has, where these people have been in a position to move up when people have left, we've always looked at, always looked at them first since they, we know, we know them, we know their work ethics and their backgrounds. And I think it's been part of, if you will, the culture of the town to allow our our staff members to move up if they are qualified. That's, so nothing new there.
Thank you, Bob.
My light just went out. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Bob.
I mean, I think it is customary generally for the Board of Selectmen to accept a resignation.
Yes, it is. I'll also move, we accept it with regret. And we should send her a letter of thanks for her years of service to our community. You did a great job.
I agree, and I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Okay, that's ayes from Maura, Pierog, DePietro, Aramita, and Miller. And I'm announcing you the way you appear on my screen tonight. So this computer is not alphabetical. Reports and updates, Subcommittee reports. Jim will be reaching out to the various subcommittees to schedule meetings. We need a Subcommittee meeting of Facilities and Public Safety and Personnel or Human Resources in the near term. There are some items that require actions or recommendations for both committees. And we need to get that back moving again now that we have a budget. Jim, did you have anything else on subcommittees?
No, the only other thing that we had chatted about, Sandy, was the other thing that we wanted to try to get wrapped up was the Branding Subcommittee.
That's correct. Thank you. That will be, Jim will be, and Kathy will be working on that scheduling as well. Properties and Facilities Report. I don't have anything other than Brian and I are alone in Town Hall. Very clean. The owl works well. It really does look like an owl.
Would have loved to have joined you tonight, but not able. Thank you.
So, and we can be here. Open Space and Management, I don't believe we have anything. Open space and management. I don't believe we have anything. Jim, do you have a fiscal year 21 budget report? Is that on hold? Because Jim was gone, Jill was gone.
We did send that out today as a supplemental. Let me see if, let me see if I can do this without help.
Open it up and then click share.
Yeah, I got that far.
It didn't make my inbox.
I think Kathy added it to my paper package and scanned that and sent it to me.
It was something in my email late this afternoon about a addition or whatever to the minutes for tonight. I think that was it.
Still going through minutes, I guess.
It was in a separate email, Jim, I believe.
Yeah, but Kathy put a whole package together for me and scanned it. So it should be in here in order. That, that happened at like 6 o'clock, so I haven't had a chance to review it, but I, I'm I, I would bet that she did it. Charter revision. Oh, there was a lot of minutes.
Yes, an inch thick. Should be coming up soon.
It should be up there, right?
Now you just need to rotate.
There you go.
There we are.
Okay, so this is where we are at. I know this is the first time you guys are seeing this because it did, it did get done late today. So try to absorb that for a minute and as soon as you're ready, I will scroll down so that you can see the rest of the report. Jill usually highlights anything for us that is out of the ordinary. You know, it appears that, you know, most of our light items are almost fully expended. There are some that are, are not expended to their fullest extent. But I don't believe there's anything on this page that's a red flag for us.
Doesn't look like it.
Are you ready for me to scroll?
Please. It also looks like we'll be returning more than 330 we committed to. Or alternatively, that we won't have any issues meeting that 330.
So right now it looks like 393,067,56.
That's good. Excellent.
Any, anybody have any specific questions?
I think that, thank you for that. Do we have any budget transfers?
Oh, that would be the next item. These are, these are pretty small in comparison to what we had been seeing.
Do you need a motion?
No, because we have, these are for.
These are the old ones. These are Julies. I'm sorry.
Old budget. We have the ability to, those transfers, so.
I did, I didn't read closely. Sorry.
Yeah, these, these are for last this week.
Yeah, okay.
In my conversation with Jill, we are anticipating just a couple of more small ones at this point in time, but nothing extraordinary.
Okay, I think we can move on unless there are other questions. We have other as item B, but I'm going to skip that for now for ongoing business and go to consider impossible action on the possession and use of cannabis on town property. It's kind of funny that I was here for the adoption of the alcohol prohibition.
So this is the, this is the alcohol policy.
Could we be looking at the fine? Fine looks like 1987 vintage too.
Yeah, it, it is. But this is, you know, mine and Kathy's stab at adapting the alcohol policy for marijuana.
Yeah, and I like the items that is in green, but I think we also need to the heritage farm and any town buildings.
Yeah, we, we could certainly add those things to be more inclusive. I don't see an issue with that.
So I have a question. So alcohol is, you know, alcohol, people can buy it. But there are people that have medicinal, medical marijuana cards? Are we going to run into a problem with, you know, if it's a legally obtained medicine, like it's medicine versus, you know, recreational that we're prohibiting it?
Well, my, my understanding of medicinal marijuana and since I think Trooper Content is still in the room, he might be able to, oh, he had to leave. But my, my understanding is that those that hold medical marijuana cards, you know, they, they can transport it, but it is only allowed to be used within the confines of their home.
Right, okay.
So I don't think there would necessarily be any reason for them to be in possession of marijuana on town property.
Okay. Can you go back to the, the alcohol thing? I'm just curious, like, is it just talking about having and drinking the alcohol or is it talking about being like drunk or?
It says bringing it, yeah, bring it in possession or drinking.
If you show up inebriated, you're not a.
That's, you're not in violation. Okay, that was my, that was my question. Thinking about it in relation to marijuana, but.
I still, that's, that's the issues of how do you the determination. They haven't even quite worked that out yet, even on traffic stops.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
So what do we want to do about the fee? Is 100 enough or both? Could be 200?
I think 100. I mean.
I agree.
I, I was thinking.
Where's the cutoff where that makes, you know, that puts you in a different category as far as?
The felony level or the I'm not an expert.
I mean, I'm, I'm guessing, but I doubt if $100 would do that.
I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's there. It's a fine and it's something that can be revisited and modified if, if, you know, the board based on recommendations from staff and, and our resident troopers that we need to modify it. We certainly can do that, but I think it's important. I'm glad this was brought forward that we, we, we adopt this policy in conjunction with the alcohol policy.
Well, its next step will be for Jim to add some additional items to the locations and then we'll run it by the town attorney. And with the fine of $100 unless, Bob, you gave me your raspy voice.
Oh my God. I, that's why I didn't go there. So you guys wouldn't catch what I got.
We'll put in the $100 fine and bring it back hopefully in August for approval after the town attorney has had the opportunity to comment. Have there any objections to that procedure? Okay.
Sandy, when you asked the town attorney to look at this, would you ask if he would recommend a separate policy as opposed to including it under the alcohol slash marijuana policy?
That's an interesting thought, Mike. Thanks for bringing that up. Yes, we will.
Just if they think it's a good recommendation or not, I don't know.
It may, may well be because it won't be buried. So.
You know, we can, we can change one and not the other and, and, you know, this one actually has, aren't we allowed to accept certain events like at Herrick Park where they do have alcohol, where we can approve that under the alcohol policy?
Yeah, there's, there's an exemption in there.
Right, and if we, we don't have one for the other, so I, I'm just, just ask if it, it might make sense to just have two separate policies.
I made that note.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
All right. Consider impossible action on the charter revisions for the November ballot. When I was going through the questions again tonight, I noticed that two of the changes that we had talked about didn't get saved into item nine. Question nine, one, two.
Jim, could you scroll down a little bit? Okay, I'm sorry. It's, it was back further.
What is it you were looking for, Mike?
The question, the questions, I think they were back further in the packet.
I think they were before budget cuts.
Yeah.
Here they are.
Yeah.
All right, stop at question nine for a second while I point out my mistakes and then we can go back and look at them one by one. The fifth, the fourth bullet where it says decrease the term of fire commissioners to four years and change the timing of the election of said members. That should be appointment, not election.
Yep.
And next page, please. Where it says add a requirement of plain language. I should have had separate bullets at each comma. Change the date of publication would be a bullet. Remove references to the judge of probate would be a bullet. Change the definition of a majority of the Board of Selectmen would be another bullet. Allow additions to Board of Selectmen agendas and change the duration of the temporary public building commission would be the last bullet. So it, it basically takes and adds almost another half a page with spacing. Jim, can we go back to question one? So I don't remember who was missing from the original discussion here, but broke this down into nine questions. The first question talks about amending the charter for the finance committee. Having the finance committee assume the role of the CAPPa committee. Increasing the Board of Selectmen from five to seven years with staggered terms. And prohibit the Board of Selectmen for simultaneously serving in other elected town offices. Questions, comments on question one.
The only one I have is what do we consider elected town offices?
That is defined in the charter.
Okay.
So it would be anything on the ballot.
I will check. Thank you.
Question two. Shall the town charter be amended to change reduce to revise in the provision relating to a failed budget referendum, thereby permitting an increase or decrease in the proposed budget? And the addition there is the change from reduce to revise and we decided the clarifying language that said if you voted for this, it could be an increase or a decrease in the budget.
Are, are we looking to, to put two questions like vote yes and then vote no too low, vote no too high? So it actually three things on the.
I haven't thought that quite through yet, Mike.
Okay.
Only advisory questions anyways.
Yeah, the, you know, we talked about this many years ago, you know, back in the TNT days of doing this to give the board that at that time and still is the Board of Finance some direction from the public. If it was overwhelmingly no, too high or overwhelmingly no too low, it would give them some direction. Or even by the number of, you know, people that voted one way or another, they would have some idea on what the people were actually looking for. So I, I just, when, when we talked about making it, you know, changing it up, down, you know, up or down, it just seemed like it would be a natural progression to put in a third line, so to speak, in the question when it comes time to vote on the budget.
But that doesn't have to be part of the charter.
No, it doesn't. That's a separate thing. I'm just talking.
Jim, can you please, pardon, keep, yeah. Thank you.
Cursor down a little bit, just a little bit more.
Sandy, what this brings up, we talked, we talked about last time was when we changed or add to questions like this, we said there were going to be some background in the explanation of what we're changing from two.
Correct. We, I haven't finished that yet.
Okay, okay.
Part of our discussion was all these questions are, do require some explanatory text so people can understand whether yes vote means and what a no means. You know, what, what does it replace or what doesn't it? That was, that's kind of critical information we felt.
Also need to get these questions.
Well, this is to get started, then we can do the explanatory.
By the attorney and to the town clerk before the end of the month, so. Time's gonna fly fast. So question three. Shall, this is, shall the town charter be amended to change the title officer to town administrator, change the role and responsibilities of that position? And change the title of CFO to director of finance? That's pretty straightforward. Question four was a new one that was added as a result of last night's, I'm sorry, the, the meeting where we discussed these. And it says, shall the town charter be amended to prohibit the administrative officer from serving in organizations or other town appointed positions which may be conflicting with responsibilities of the position of administrative officer?
So I have a lot of problem with the way that's written. I, I think that is, the way, the way it reads is, I, I, I think is misleading. As to what was actually written in the charter. The charter was very specific as to certain items which in three members of the that commission, whatever, three or four, felt were conflicts. And the other members did not, and I personally have an issue with that, and that was, and they specifically laid them out. Being a member of the fire department, either as an EMT or firefighter, didn't get into that detail. Being the town fire marshal, serving as a town fire marshal, or even serving as the EMS director. They found, somehow felt that that was a conflict of interest. Nowhere in this question if someone reading this, would they have that information? And I think that's critical because, you know, yeah, we, 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 we do not want our administrative officers serving on an organization where there is a true conflict of interest. I don't see this as a true conflict of interest, and so does a hell of a lot of other people, but reading that question, you have no idea that these items.
I would be open to a suggestion on language. I struggled with this without making this a five sentence.
Yeah.
Question.
Yeah. I, I, off the top of my head, you know, would it be all right if?
A other town positions such as fire department, emergency operations director, and maybe just list those four.
Well, that, 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 I would, yes, I think that's, that would work for me.
Okay.
Last question, please. Can we give, can we give examples of what might be the basis for a conflict?
Not sure I understood your question, Bob. Try again.
All right. In other words, is it because of financial or time away from office? What is the basis for a possible conflict?
Yeah, the, the charter revision commission felt that the town administrator needed to be focusing on town business and not the business of the fire department, the fire marshal, or anyone else. On the emergency operations director. I'm pretty sure I don't with that.
You know, and I argue that serving in town in an emergency situation, fire or EMT, and as in town fire marshal, and also as EMS director is in fact doing town business as, no matter what. And I think that, that is, that, that is trying to cut the baby in half when you kill the baby.
All right, I will try to put something together here. Bob, how do you feel about serving in the organizations? Do you think those need to be laid out in the question?
Which Bob are you talking to?
Who, Bob? Maura.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't hear. That, that may be because they, they did in fact lay them out. And, you know, that's, and I think for someone to understand the questions, that's probably the simplest way to do it, and it, and it, and it doesn't say we're prejudiced one way or the other. These are the, these are the items. You'll agree or disagree.
I'm open to whatever. I made a stab at this to avoid.
No, I appreciate that, and then that might just add a sentence because there wasn't a lot of items on there, and just or to include or whatever, however you want it, the intro to it. But I think, I think if people voting on this should know what.
Voting, but not limited to.
Right, there you go. Otherwise the voter really, every, you have a thousand voters, there's a thousand different concepts of what conflict of interest.
Of course. All right, so I've got some changes to work on there. Question five, shall the current thresholds for borrowing and special appropriations be lowered so that amounts above 2% of total expenditures must go to referendum? I think that one's pretty.
Straightforward.
Forward. Number six, shall the charter be amended to merge planning and zoning inland wetlands? I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Just backing up to that last one, the, shall the current threshold for borrowing special appropriations be lowered so the amounts above 2% of the total? Now, it says expenditures. Is it the expenditure that we're borrowing? Or is it the total expenditure of the annual budget? What?
For the annual budget.
I think you need to put that in there because it's kind of.
Expenditures is defined in the charter.
Okay, but for, for this particular question, it might be helpful because if I read this, I, I would think that you're talking about the expenditure that we're voting, that you want to send to referendum or whatever. So I, I would just say total annual expenditures or total town expenditures, something to, to let the people know either in this or in the related materials so that they know they're talking about the, the annual town budget as opposed to the expenditure that you want to send to referendum.
Point again, how about if it's now says among, above 2% of the approved total annual expenditures must go to referendum?
Something like that, yeah. I, you know, just something to clarify it a little bit. So it's talking about the town's expenditures as opposed to that one item, just however you can do it is fine. I just think it needs to be a little clarification, that's all.
Is total town expenditures.
That's.
Town and board of ed and capital and debt.
Okay, however you can get it in there is fine, just to clarify it a little bit.
I'll try. Shall, shall the charter be amended to merge planning and zoning in the wetland? Make members of that combine boards, its alternates, and members of the zoning board appeals and its alternates appointed positions.
Pretty straightforward.
Think so, too. Charter be amended to change how vacancies on appointed boards are filled in the procedure for removing members of appointed boards. That one is pretty straightforward, too, unless someone disagrees.
Oh, the, the only question I have is it says change how the vacancies are filled. It doesn't describe what the change is.
Well, the, the backup information should have to do that.
Okay, all right, that's fine. That's, as long as it's there somewhere, it's good.
At some point during the month of September, we're going to have to figure out how this information gets disseminated to every household in town. And how many pages it ends up being. It may be a every door drop or on the website, although I'm not sure everybody would get it on the website, so it's going to bear some discussion. Once we know whether we've got 50 pages or 10 pages. Question eight, and the last question, other than the technical changes, shall the town charter adopt general, gender neutral language to replace black man, select men terms and pronouns throughout the charter?
I, I agree with that. That's.
As straightforward as it can be.
Yeah.
And then question nine is just a bunch of bullets. It's a yes to all or a no to all. First is change the economic development committee from a required to an optional board. Add a definition of total expenditure amount. That's your question five comment, Mike.
Yep.
Change the timing of notices of transfers of special appropriations. Increase the term of the fire commissioners to four years and change the timing of the appointment of said members. Change the timing of the election of chairman of elected and appointed boards and commissions. And that's to clarify that they only need to be elected once every election year. Clarify conflict of interest visions. Change the method of resolving a tie vote to a coin toss. Add provisions for posting and recording materials of certain board and commission meetings. Change the timing of the selection of the auditor. Vision regarding the appointment of the treasurer. Add a requirement of plain language summary of the budget. Change the date of publication of the annual report. Move references to the judge of probate. Change the definition of a majority on the board of selectmen. Allow additions to the board of selectmen agendas and change the duration of the public building commission. And all of these last items will be separate bullets.
Sandy, what is the, please explain, what is the definition of a majority of the board of selectmen? How can that be?
It's because if the board of selectmen increases to seven, the current majority of the board of selectmen is three. So if we have a seven member board, it would need to be four.
Yeah. Good luck.
Yeah, I wish I had a sense of voter acceptance of some of these changes, but I don't have that.
Are, are people, so sorry, silly question, I guess, but when you guys did this the last time, how did it go? Like, I feel like if I was just a plain old person who wasn't in these 15 conversations that we had with, you know, explanations from the charter revision committee, I would be like, am I supposed to say yes or no? Like, I
Yep.
Just wonder how.
I can tell you that.
Understand, like.
In 19, a proposed charter change in 1988. And a lot of people stood on the side of the road with their handmade signs and said vote yes on question whatever, and vote no on question whatever. For the charter change. So and I don't remember, I have to go back through my really old stuff. I don't remember what the explanation that the board of selectmen did was. Your question is very good, Kim. Most people aren't going to know.
Well, and even, like, things like change the timing of the selection of the auditor. I'm like, do we want to change the time? Do we want? Yeah, and change it to what? Like, so I don't know, I just, I get that we have to put it forth to everybody, but it just feels like it's a lot of information, and I feel like it's also not enough information, right? They'd have to read the whole charter and understand. And I don't feel like giving it to the lawyer is going to help. Like, I feel like the lawyer is gonna something that's less.
Out of jail.
What?
One, one, Kim, one of the things that is important is to send out an explanatory document with everyone who, if, if you're all interested, then you will read it and then make it, make a vote on it. If you're not, you may not even vote on this thing, or who knows? But in the past, there's generally been one or two items that have been the, if you will, the broad items that people kind of rallied around or against. This will probably be similar to that, that all the other items are together there, and most people say, I don't care either way, but a couple of bullet items, and that's, and that's what it advised drive it forward or drive it back. What's unique about this one, I can't remember one, we've had this many questions that have broken up.
Generally, it's just been.
It's been like one or two questions and that's it, so. Here the voter really has has a regular cafeteria approach to how, how they want it. I, I like this better, frankly, to break it up. But it, it requires, it requires a, a voter to take the time and.
I don't know who might be causing the problem, but somebody is causing a back echo. So if you're not speaking, if you could mute, that would be great. It seems to have subsided, so whoever it was.
I think I just, I think I just muted Bob DePietro. I think that's where it was coming from.
Oh, thank you. All right, so.
So on the ballot, is there any other information besides the questions? Like, it doesn't say anything like vote yes to accept the recommendation of the, you know, charter revision committee, or vote no to not accept it, whatever. Just so at least people have a sense of.
Yeah, I don't know that we can do that.
Okay.
But I certainly will ask the town clerk.
Yeah, I'm not trying to sway, I just meant, you know, just to, so people at least know.
But it's a good point.
Coming from.
The, as soon as we have adopted the questions and accepted the explanatory document, CVC has agreed to host two or three shows on what the questions are. We're thinking in an hour, we can easily get through two or three questions and talk about it. And they have the technology now. So if we can schedule it at the right time when all of their staff is available, they can do a call in show.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that might be the worth, the way to go. And if, if they can't schedule it, then I'll do a Facebook Live call in show. And we can talk about the budget, but I don't want to do that until we've one, agreed to the questions, and two, agreed to the summary document. Because once I have that, I can keep my opinion, personal opinions off the table and just talk to the document. So are there any other changes that anybody else has noted? All right. Let's move on then. I will try to get these done by the end of the week and recirculated to you, and we may need a special meeting to approve it. approve it. So if you do see something on the revised document that you would like changed, please don't be shy. Let me know what it is. So next item is consider and possible action on budget cuts. We were cut, we, the town, were cut by the Board of Finance for two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Jill and I, Jim and I had a discussion this afternoon to talk about where we thought it could come from. Jim, do you have that email so you can put it up?
I'm getting technical assistance.
There we go.
The biggest number here is from personnel benefits. And that category includes health insurance, pension. Social Security, life insurance, dental insurance. And we went through that pretty detailed. And Jill believes that based on the fact that our supervisors' contract settled at two point two five percent, there's a half a percent for all the supervisors, which will affect their pensions. Their social security. The other item here that's worth Town Clerk, Finance Director and Tax Collector, just a few items that I believe we were able to purchase in this year, so we don't have to purchase next year. Same with highway. Police is a reduction of ten thousand dollars. The we had budgeted four oh five. Our bill from last year came in at three forty. So we have put a fifteen percent cushion in there for overtime and a potential change in trooper. So that gives us ten thousand out of there. The library is the big one, and it also affects personnel benefits. The library had asked for putting a part time person to full time. And that person had indicated that they would participate. If they went full time, they would participate in health insurance. So adding them to the health insurance on a full family costs the town twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then their additional wages would be thirteen seven ninety-one. So
You're recommending not
We're recommending at this point to not add that position, not change that position from full time. From I'm sorry, part from twenty hours to thirty-seven and a half.
Okay. And the are the that twenty some thousand for health insurance, is that included in the reduction in personnel benefits?
It is.
It is. Okay. And are the rest of the benefits or the rest of the reduction attributed to savings or to cuts?
Savings.
Okay. All right.
Well, at least as far as finance, tax collector. Highway
Yeah, with the exception of the police, I think they're all savings.
Yeah, I'm I'm talking specifically about personnel benefits.
There is there is no decrease.
So it's all in savings from different insurances and things like that. Okay. All right. That's then I think this list is
Identified early on that the personnel benefits savings on health insurance for the town side would be a number slightly greater than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we had also included the twenty-eight thousand. So that was say, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And we've been able to identify between pensions, social security, life insurance changes twenty thousand dollars.
And I think your list is pretty appropriate.
And the thirty-two thousand from rec, that's because
That's because Dean will be leaving. And that was her salary.
Got it. And so you already have somebody being paid under under another category. So and that was the amount we put in to cover their loss during COVID. Okay.
Correct. So that gets to our two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's not nearly as painful a discussion as I had anticipated. But the big thing that I think we're going to get pushed back on is the library position.
So can I ask a dumb question? Right? Sorry. What is our? What is our total budget? Like, the Board of Selectmen? Or, you know, like all the town and not the school?
We don't have that.
No, if I have that number, do you, Jim?
But is it like four million? It's somewhere in there, right?
I don't know it off the top of my head.
And it also depends on what you include in that. You know, are you talking capital? You talk
Okay, I'll just I'll just ask my statement then. So how how we run things when I do projects at work, right, is that we sometimes go into something knowing that we're financially hot. So we might be running like a million dollars over, but it's only, you know, two percent. And we know that stuff runs under. So we'll just go in not like hot. So we hired the extra people and we've done whatever. And then we just monitor throughout the course of the year, our expenditures to ensure that we end up ultimately on budget at the end of the year. If we can cut a lot of these things, but one of them we have a problem with, which sounds like the library. And I don't, this might be against charter, but can we go in sort of accepting that we're hot, knowing that we always run under and we can monitor throughout the year? Or is that sort of not? That's probably not an acceptable practice. We do it all the time. But I mean, that's
We would have to find another place to make these cuts.
Right.
Oh, you would. Okay.
You have to those numbers have to balance.
You can get away with it in business, private industry. But when you're dealing with town monies, public monies, you can't, you can't
At the start of my year, I was running two and a half million hot on seventeen million in my and 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 but I ended up getting more money. So now I've got like twenty-three million. So I'm all set. But yeah.
No, I mean, what we could do is, you know, mid-year, like January.
Right.
Okay.
Aside that the that we've got some savings in other areas, or it looks like we've got some savings in other areas and we can take the library numbers. And at that point, it would be more like thirty-five thousand for the half a year of insurance and half a year of that salary. And we could make that happen.
You just, we have to be careful when we do that because we're buying into next year's budget. A deficit before we even start. And and, you know, it's, it's difficult to get. It's difficult to get rid of people, you know, it's once you get them, you know, be it union or just the way the world is, it's hard to cut back once you start something. And you know, even if you started halfway through the year, we used to do that a lot. And, you know, start a raise halfway through the year, because, you know, you'd say, you know, we want three, four percent, you know, well, we won't start you now, we'll start you in January. But now next year is already locked into four percent. And it's it's deceiving. It's it's kind of make believe money, if you know what I'm getting at. Because it's it's
I know exactly what you're getting at.
You know, it's if it wasn't accepted this year, what makes us think that that money that that forty thousand or whatever is going to be available next year? And not going to be on the table for a cut, you know, so it's it's just difficult. But I think, you know, yes, you're going to get some pushback from the library, but they're existing with the people they have now. They haven't lost anybody, haven't lost hours, they haven't lost staff, they haven't lost anything. So they're no further behind than they were a month ago. And, you know, yes, they didn't get it. They didn't get an improve. They didn't get improvements, but they didn't. They didn't lose anybody. And, you know, that's, that's kind of what you hope for at the end of the year, that you haven't lost something. Nice to get something, but
Mike, I just want to say, there's no, you're not focusing here, the benefits of that person, the words, don't get it, like a white canvas, cutting the library, said that, said he, but that person happens to be very important to the town overall. It's just, you know, not just a blank canvas. I hear you. It's very expressive. But can we look at the quality that she provides and look at its other possibilities?
The unfortunate part about that one, Bob, is the fact that it comes along with the the twenty-eight thousand dollars of fringe benefits. It's not just the thirteen thousand of the salary. When you, if you buy into the thirteen seven ninety-one of salary, you're also buying into the twenty-eight thousand additional benefits in health insurance. So it's a, it sounds like a small amount, and it was a small amount when it was presented, the thirteen thousand, which in our grand scheme of things is not a lot. But all of a sudden, it becomes forty thousand when you had the benefits. And then then it's then it's a much more significant amount. And, you know, everything comes with baggage and that does too, unfortunately.
Yeah. If you would like, we could have Jill go back and look and see if there's another place we could identify. It's probably about forty-five thousand when you add the life insurance, the pension and the social security contributions.
You know, I I would love to do it. But I think with a budget that took four times to pass and a significant cut of two hundred and some odd thousand, I don't think increases in program and personnel are appropriate.
I would tend to agree. So is what's your pleasure? Do you want to accept these cuts? Postpone it?
I move we accept them and go on.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I will. And with the and with the comment that you can always, you know, you, yeah, you may want to go back and look at it, but we're in a very difficult position in that when you, I understand the libraries, you know, they presented a good argument of expanding. But Mike also puts out a good point that we've had these significant cuts and we've we're going to absorb these cuts. And it took four, four, four shots at a referendum to pass. And that's, that's a message from our taxpayers for us to be as frugal as we possibly can. And I think that this is what we should do.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion to approve the cuts as presented?
My only comment, just for the record, is that I, I, I accept it because I think everyone's right about it took four times to pass and we're adding new programs. But it just hurts my heart. I know that they do so. Yeah, I know. They do so much for the town. And I know there are some people who don't use the library. There are a lot of people and I don't actually use it. So it's not a personal benefit. I just know that there is a lot of people who do. And, you know, they work hard to make things right for the town. So I was hoping we could support them. But I don't know that we have an option. So I will unfortunately agree with the proposed cuts.
I guess I want to say, Kim, even today, it's like today, a taxpayer telling me how much she absolutely loves the library and the programs offered there today. That's how important it is.
I agree. I agree, Bob. Do we have other options? It didn't really sound like we had a lot of other, you know, I don't think there's a lot of other places or, you know, unless we can come up with some that more discretionary in nature.
We're not reducing anything, are we?
No, not reducing anything.
No, right, right now, we're just cutting in a new program, a new increase. It's, it's, it's not taking money away and it's not damaging the programs that are there now. It's just we can't afford an increase in staff. It's, it's, you know, and and to do things to other sections of the budget, you will be reducing things where this is not a reduction. It's a doing away with an increase or a new program, a new person. It's just, it's not the time. And, you know, I feel for the library as well, you know, I, I just, I don't think it's time to put in on an additional person.
Okay, because I can't see everybody, I'm going to do a roll call. Bob Mora? Oh, now I can see. Bob Di Pietro? Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Miller?
Unfortunately, aye.
And Pierog votes aye. So that passes for ayes, one nay. Moving on, the special events permit fee. Jim had put together a recommendation at the base fee be increased from fifty to a hundred and fifty for all applicants. And then for special events that require inspections, add-on fees of fifty dollars for building and fire for a nonprofit during work hours. Sixty-five dollars for a nonprofit who has off hours, including employee travel time. Fifty dollars per hour for each discipline during work hours with a minimum of one hour billed in fifteen minute increments after the first hour. And then eighty dollars an hour for off work hours, including travel time with a minimum of one and a half hours billed at fifteen minutes increment. And then applicants are responsible for fees related to the state trooper and other permits required by building, fire or health. Jim, do you want, excuse me, do you have any comments?
Well, you, you guys had asked me to look at this and, you know, try to differentiate between groups that were doing things for profit and groups that were doing things on a nonprofit basis. And that's what I tried to do here. And, you know, I looked at our history of the things that we typically do and the time that it takes. And I think that, you know, this, this would allow us to at least not necessarily incur high costs to the town. Right now, with these events, it takes a tremendous amount of effort, both by town staff and and volunteer organizations to be able to put these things together. And right now, they're, they're coming at, you know, sometimes a fairly significant financial burden to the town. fairly significant uh financial burden to the town, and I, I think it's necessary that especially when we're, we are having very tight budgets like we have this year that, you know, that we be responsible and try to mitigate those costs to the taxpayers.
I agree, you know, I think the, the bare minimum we should be doing is recouping our costs. And, and I think that's what you've tried to do in this. The only, the only thing I have a question with is the very first line of that uh where it talks about a, a special events fee, uh is that uh, I d- I ki- I kind of don't understand, it's just an increase in the base fee?
Correct.
For every event?
Right, correct, that base fee, the base fee is currently fifty dollars.
Yep.
And you know, that, you know that doesn't even begin to cover the administrative costs that we incur as a town. Um, you know, for take, just, just even taking in a permit, you know, and dealing with the applicants to help them do that.
Okay.
You know, we, we far exceed that fifty dollar mark currently.
Yeah, and right now, the fifty dollar fee is all they pay, plus any permit fees or state trooper costs, so.
That's correct.
Has to go to um inspect tents, or the building official has to go to expect, inspect electrical installations. Um, at all is not charged to the event people at this point.
Right, and back when m- the majority of the events were all nonprofit, community-based organizations, it's one thing, but we've started to have a few that are for-profit and not based in our community. Which is not fair to the taxpayers to absorb costs for a for-profit enterprise, not even based here.
Yeah, the only um question I'd like us to consider is, do we want to put a provision in where that we, the Board of Selectmen, may waive certain fees?
You read my mind.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's exactly what I was gonna recommend.
That doesn't say we have to do it, but
Right.
Somebody comes and says, I can't I can't afford this because we're doing this for free, I think we ought to listen to them.
Yep.
So, um Jim, do you need action on this tonight?
It doesn't have to be tonight, um, you know, we, we've already received the application for Farm Day. Um, it's probably the last event we'll have um before we would have an opportunity to, to act on it, so I, I can certainly revise this uh in accordance with your comments and bring it back to the next meeting.
Excellent. Does anybody have any other comments they want Jim to address? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to Everbridge notifications. Um, Jim also provided us with a list of show, um, Everbridge uses, severe weather, road closures due to accidents, referendum, election voting, Bolton Lake treatments, algae notification closings, health concerns, or COVID, or other public service notifications deemed of importance. Um, that's sort of a, a catch-all, but the thing that came to mind was uh police incidents requiring or suggesting lockdown.
We, we could change that last bullet, um, you know, and I did realize that it was a little bit open-ended. Um, we, we could potentially add some language where any other public service notification deemed of importance by uh first selectman or designee.
Yeah, you, you need some caveat there that when the shit hits the fan for some unknown reason, somebody has the right to push the button. You know, i- we can't, we can't predict every situation that we would want to use Everbridge for, it's
And tha- and that's why, and that's why I have that number six.
Yeah, yeah, I think you have to have that, just because the nature of the world and everything else that's in it, and the fact that we have Everbridge to let our people know when they need to know, and there will be a time when, when none of those categories fits what you want to put out, and you need to have a, a way to do it.
So I, I would like to say that, you know, we've used Everbridge for all of these purposes in the past. And the only thing that we have gotten any pushback on was when we used it to, to remind people to vote. Um, so I think that, you know, cert- that specific bullet point bears some consideration by the Board of Selectmen. I, I don't think, you know, Sandy, Sandy got more of these comments than I did, I, I don't think it was a tremendous number, Sandy, was it?
Um, it was about twenty-five, um, but it was I'm, I'm sure Bob and Mike know that you have a frequent complainer list. And all twenty-five of them were on that list.
Okay.
Yep, so, I, no, I think your list is appropriate, and we have to have the, the catch-all at the end for the time that it's needed.
With, with the amended language?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, good job, Jim, and we'll bring it back in September and approve it. Uh, COVID nineteen, uh, we have three hundred and eight cases in Bolton. Um, that's up from the twenty-ninth of July, when we had two hundred and ninety-seven. Um, so case spread is happening. Um, the uh Health District has, uh, actually CDC has designated Talon County as a significant spread site where all individuals in public places are recommended to wear a mask. Um, and uh I'm sure you remember that Bolton has, still requires masks in all town properties, and I'm here alone tonight, so I have no mask on. Under other, um, I've heard from the Heritage Farm Commission that they will not be having the farmer's market this year. Um, apparently several of their large um vendors um have said that um it's not worth to them the time and money. Um, well, the time and effort, rather, that it takes to go up there and set up in return for the financial gain for being there, so um that will be um holed for at least a year.
Just because of COVID or in general?
Um, I, I didn't talk to any of them, Bob, do you have any, Bob Moore, do you have any comments?
You know, it's, it's, uh, it's really a combination of the two, you know, COVID has required us, even like I do cleanings and stuff that I never even thought of, of doing before and, and efforts, and uh, there's, you know, so much apprehension out there, and you go set up, you know, what's, you know, what's, what's I know what I feel comfortable with, what do other field people comfortable with, on top of that, the, the, the actual setup, breakdown and setup uh for a lot of these folks is, is substantial, both personnel and time. And for the amount of funds that they get there, it's a loss. It, it truly is, they, they're better off a- at their own businesses, doing their thing, so. It, it's a combination, and, and the COVID thing just, it's kind of like the, the nail, but seal the coffin sort of thing.
The weather hasn't helped crops either.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's been a hell of a year, I mean, stuff, crop-wise, things that normally would be flourishing right now are just starting. Uh, you know, even when they decided on that, yeah, I don't think anybody really knows what the hell is gonna be available in two weeks and not be available, it's a real crapshoot out there, so. And, you know, can't, can't blame the guys out there trying to make stuff grow in spite of fourteen inches of rain and and get crap anyway.
I was listening, like, California crop report.
Yeah.
On some crazy radio station, I was found when I was flipping through Sirius, and they were saying that um, the California tomato crop, the lemon crop, the lettuce crop, and the spinach and kale crops um are down at least forty percent this year.
Yeah, no water.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
We're drowning in this.
Right, time to build a pipeline.
Actually, put some of that infrastructure money to excellent use.
There you go.
Not oil, we're pu- pipe water, it's, water's more expensive right now.
Yep.
Um, Jim, you want to talk about reopening?
Uh, there was one other thing, Sandy, we wanted to talk about under other, uh, which was the uh bid on the fire department boat.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, um. Why don't you talk about that, because I left my notes in the other.
So the fire department boat has gone out to bid, uh, you know, for, for sale at auction, uh, three separate times now. Um, and two people, uh, per- you know, expressed interest. And this last time that it, we put it up on the website for, um, you know, for bidding, uh, we actually physically reached out to those two individuals that had verbally expressed interest and told them what they needed to do to submit a bid. Um, the only bid that we received um was for someone that, from someone that is related to me, and so Sandy and I did not feel comfortable making a decision about uh selling that boat, uh, the only bid that we received was for an amount of, of three hundred dollars. And so we thought it was appropriate to bring that to the Board of Selectmen to make a decision. Um, I, I do know that space is at a premium at the fire department. Um, we did do some research before the first time we put it out to bid, and we estimated its value at about twelve hundred dollars uh for somebody who wanted that uh particular piece of equipment, that would be about its uh, about its current value in the marketplace.
And that is the Zodiac that leaks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the motor on it is in very good condition, because it's got very low hours on it. Yeah. The, the boat itself is so-so, you know, it's, it is what it is, it's a thirty-year-old Zodiac, you know, that kind of thing. But the, the motor is the, the valuable part of the machinery.
Right.
Well, the problem with outboards that sit for long is it could require all-new wiring and all-new hoses.
Oh, yeah, it's, I'm sure it needs some work, and, you know, I, I think we should get rid of it. You know, I, I wish we could have taken the first offer that was verbal, but that's gone by the wayside, so. I, I, I think we take what we can get for it.
And move it out.
Yep.
Is that a motion, Mike?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, and Bob Moore, is that a second?
Yes, may I, it's a second.
Any further?
Yeah, so we're saying we've tried to sell it three times.
Three times.
And we've got mineral interest.
And it was posted about, about two weeks each time.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's the wrong time of the year to be selling a boat, to begin with, you know, season's coming to a close, so.
Not the type of boat that is what, what most people are looking for.
No.
And it's definitely a project.
Yeah, it is, it needs a new keel put on it and a few other things and, you know.
Throw it away, use the motor.
The motor and the trailer are, are what have some value.
That has value, the rest of it, it's not worth Disney Squad.
It's like a car, you jack up the antenna and throw a new car under it.
Love it, all right, so, um, Bob Moore, your vote?
Uh, uh, my, I'm in favor of uh the sale.
Pietro? Aye, uh, Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierog votes aye, okay, um, Jim, I trust you to take care of the details.
Yep, Ca- Kathy will do that, um, that's, that's wonderful, that, yeah, and I will say while we're on the tide, we did have a very successful bid um with the recent town truck that uh was, was sold, that was in some re- relatively high demand, and we actually got more money for that than we thought we would, um, that, that winning bid was ten thousand dollars, so. We, we uh certainly made up for the loss on the boat with the sale of the one-ton flatbed. So that uh
Are you allowed to say who it went to?
Um, I'm not sure I know, truthfully.
Okay, I was just curious, because I had specifically talked to a couple of people about it, and I was just curious.
I, I, I think, yeah, I mean, it's, it's public information, I, I think it was uh the mason up on uh, up by the lake, Frank Cardillo.
Oh, okay, cool.
I think that's who the winning bid was.
Good.
Um, so we were talking about, next item was reopening, correct, Sandy? So that, you know, reopening is, is really gone um quite well, um, and you'll see in in the bullet point report that I provided for you, that as part of the reopening program, I did both visit uh both the senior center to see how reopening was going there, I witnessed a couple of uh individuals sign into their new uh gatekeeping system, if you will, which is a wall-mounted iPad uh on an extendable arm. And it's interesting the way that it's set up, if you're, you know, if, if you're a frequent i- individual who goes there, um, pretty much all you do is type in your phone number. And you get to choose, you, because you might have more than one individual registered under that phone number. And it pops up with the individuals under that phone number, you choose who you are, and then you get a dropdown menu of what program that you're there for, and so, you know, that, that is kept track of uh very well, um, the day that I was there, um I did get a, a quick tour of what was happening and how some things had changed with space usage within the building, and they were getting set up for uh plain setbacks. So there was a small group of individuals who were there. But they were, they, they reported that they were very, very happy to be back and that they were enjoying the senior center once again. Additionally, I did take the opportunity to visit the library, and they showed me what was new at the library, and they talked about their program spaces and how they had been taking precautions uh by putting up some additional Plexiglas shields between some of the computers. How they had changed some of their program spaces and what staff were doing um to keep themselves in the public safe, and I think both plans were, have been very well executed, and I think pretty well received by the public. Um, Town Hall reopening has also gone pretty well. Um, we've had a few individuals express that they're not happy about the mask requirements. Um, it has been pretty rare that we have people waiting outside to get in because of the way that um we are access-controlling, so that we don't have groups intermingling. And um, you know, I think that, that it's working out really quite well, I think the signs that we put up there have turned out to be very helpful for individuals to find the appropriate locations where they're going, and um I, I think the public appreciates being able to come back in. Uh, I, I will tell you that, you know, we don't have droves of individuals coming to Town Hall. It is busy at the tax collector's office from time to time, but it's going really well. Um, does anybody have any questions about any of the reopening things that are happening? Has anybody heard anything negative that you think we need to address?
Just the mask wearing.
Yeah, well, and I, you know, you and I chatted a little bit earlier, Sandy, and, you know, we said, well, maybe we were clairvoyant in making those requirements, given the, you know, current circumstance, because if we had, you know, reopen on the nineteenth without a mask requirement, we, we probably would be instituting that mask requirement this week. As, as most ti- as most town halls are currently doing.
Right.
And it's interesting, there was some social media traffic today about the town clerk's five-dollar notary fee. And I did some internet research on what other towns were charging and everybody around us is charging five dollars. But Manchester town clerk still will not let you into the office, nor will the Coventry town clerk. So, and Hebron's town clerk remains appointment only. So it's kind of interesting that we're open and some of our neighbors are not.
The, the interesting thing about that particular exchange is I, I was in the next room when that individual came in and, and he was very pleased to be there and very happy with the service that he got from the clerk's office when he was there. And I believe that he read the fee schedule wrong because I think we only charge two dollars for a notary. So I think that there was a little misinformation there.
Yeah, he's, he's the individual who bought the house the town was looking at.
Correct. Yep.
On a sorority school. So I would think that a five-dollar notary fee would not be. But anyways, I think.
So, yeah, so that, I mean, that's really all I had on reopening. I did speak with Chief Dixon again this afternoon. And last week, we, we spent a few minutes together and actually called Atlanta-Detroit while he was in my office. And, you know, they fully admit that, you know, they have a couple of big invoices to work on and, and ours for the fire truck was one of them. We, we get a lot of empty promises about actually getting the bill. But to date, we still don't have a bill. We're not, when I shared this with Sandy earlier today, you know, she remarked, it must be hard to pay in business when you're not taking in revenue after making some significant expenses. So I, I, I'm not sure there's much more we can do other than to continue to call them and ask them for the bill and remind them that it's part of our closeout documentations for, you know, the last fiscal year. But reports are that the fire truck is working well. It's been put through its paces and everybody's pretty happy with the work that was, was, was done to it. Any questions on that before we move on?
You might just want to mention that the rescue truck also made a trip.
Yeah, the rescue truck was, you know, and please correct me if I get anything incorrect here, Mike. Now, the rescue truck, it was noticed that it was losing antifreeze. And they had a technician actually come to the fire department from Atlantic Detroit Diesel and they looked at it and didn't find anything while it was there, but they did, it did end up going by tow to the shop in Middletown where they spent more time looking at it. And my understanding is that they found three leaks, I believe mostly with hoses and that sort of ancillary thing. Those were all corrected. Was filled with antifreeze. It was brought back to the fire station. It's back in service and the fire department and its members are monitoring very carefully how much antifreeze is going into it, if any, is being lost. And how's that going so far, Mike? Are, are we?
So far, no problem.
So far, no problems and, and no loss of fluid?
No, not, not to my knowledge. They checked it again last night. You know, we had our meeting and, and the engineers went over it last night. And, you know, thank God, we were very concerned that it could have been going into a cylinder or something that's what caused the failure of the other engine. So we were running a little scared, so to speak.
Yeah, no, I don't blame you.
And, and we're very happy to find that it wasn't a, a major internal problem. So we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed and we're watching it very carefully.
Great.
My understanding is we're still waiting for that bill as well.
More than likely.
That is a, a current year bill, so we're not as concerned.
So in my July highlights, I talked about the fact that we reopened Indian Lodge Park. Unfortunately, it didn't last very long based on the report that Kim Welch gave you earlier. And that is, in fact, the second bullet point that we are having issues with the cyanobacteria blue-green algae, which is being monitored. You know, Kim and her group as well as, you know, Nier and its staffers and the health department have been doing an extraordinary job. And, you know, Kim has been really great at coordinating efforts and making sure that everybody's on the same page. And really thankful to have everybody on the team because frankly, this is a new thing to me. It's not something I've had to deal with before. And Kim and I have talked on the phone and she gave me a pretty good education at one point. So we are all working together for this common goal. And I, I'm hoping that what happens is when we get the test results back, that the experts that we've engaged will give us some recommendations about next steps from that point. I did talk with Rob Miller again today, who as you all know is our Director of Public Health. He has left on vacation. But Lynette Swanson, I copied her on our string of emails earlier today because she will be the acting Public Health Director during Rob's absence. So, you know, their weekly visual inspections are continuing to happen through Thad King, who was our in-town sanitarian. So that's, that's where that's going. Talked about the reopening plan already. We talked about the fact that I made visits to the library and senior center during the extreme rain event that we had. We did have some flooding in two basements in town buildings. Fortunately, there was no damage done. We did have to incur a little bit of overtime to get some things pumped out. And a couple of our sump pumps failed, so we did have to replace those. We are making continued progress on the new website. We're hoping to go live with that new website in the next couple of weeks. We're, we're putting it through some beta testing right now and looking at it pretty carefully. As many of you know, I think we had a vaccination clinic from Hartford Healthcare at the library, which was very surprised. We vaccinated thirteen individuals. We have ten scheduled for second doses sometime this month. I can't remember the date. And then I believe it's on the eighteenth with our next concert. We actually have a pop-up clinic sponsored by the Eastern Highlands Health District where vaccines will also be available. With the Farm Day event, I talked with the new executive director today and she's going to make a space available for Eastern Highlands Health District to have a clinic at the Farm Day event, which typically has somewhere between six and ten thousand participants. So that should also be an extraordinary event. I did meet with All-American Waste earlier this month and we received a community reinvestment check of twenty-five hundred dollars. We met with Kerma and received a check for thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. They, they do give checks back when they have a successful year to all of their member towns. And that was our part of it. John L. Sessler from Coventry hosted a meeting for area town administrators, which I did attend. It was really, it was really great to be able to have that conversation, those conversations with them and meet them on a professional level and talk about the challenges they were facing in their towns. And it's good to know that, you know, they're facing the challenges, same challenges we are. And we shared ideas to talk about the solutions that we're all, you know, using to approach these different issues. So that was excellent. We've taken a building permit to build a Dollar General at eleven-hundred Boston Turnpike. That's the building that I think we reported to you at some point in the past. We are moving forward with the next steps on the connectivity grant. I think really all we have left in the planning phase is to get a, an easement from the church next door. After that, we'll be ready to start the construction phase of the project. We've completed and submitted the paperwork for FEMA for Tropical Storm ICAEAUS. They tell us that the total amount of, of dollars adds up to about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that, you know, are, are, depending on how much of that they accept, our reimbursement for that is, I believe, is at seventy-five percent. So I think that math comes out to somewhere in the mid-eighty-thousand-dollar range. So we're, we'll be working with them on anything further they need. We fortunately had a really, a great individual from FEMA to work with on this particular paperwork. So that was very helpful. And the only other thing I had in my July highlights was the resignation letter from our recreation director. Does anybody have any questions about any of those items? The other, the other thing I would like to bring up under other, we've been invited, as you all know, we had a group of engineering students work with us on some virtual planning for a town hall building this year. Charles Merrick is the, I believe he's the dean of the engineering school at UConn and he's invited us to participate in a program again this year. And typically what we do is we try to find a program that might be of interest to those engineering students. Josh and Patrice and I had put together in the past some, some projects for consideration. And I'd really like to get your input as to which one of those projects might be most important to you. So one of the things that we talked about in the past was having the engineering students work on some of the engineering to bring our vibrant community study a little closer to, you know, a, a planning phase. You know, right now we have this, it's really an idea with schematic sketches and the engineering students could potentially take that a little further. And that, at this point in time, if we wanted to go forward with that kind of a plan, it, it could be potentially tied in to the work that's being done on the Heritage Farm with the consultants that we have working over there and the connectivity grant, which will be executed, bringing that pathway, you know, right through the, the town center. The, one of the other ideas that we've had in the past is, you know, there, there is a potential at some point in history and future history that there could be a potential problem with the dam at Bolton Lake. And, you know, who would we evacuate if we had a dam failure? So that would be a, an inundation project where they would in fact map the flood zone and help us determine the limits of areas where we would evacuate. And the, and the other thing which we've discussed, which is kind of a new idea, you know, we discussed the possibility of using some of our ARP funds to, to bring water in from Manchester. And that's possibly something that we could use engineering students to help us figure some of those technical difficulties out and use their skills as engineers to, you know, help figure some of this out. You know, they're, they're not licensed engineers, so we can't necessarily use plans up for anything other than planning and schematic purposes. But that would be a potential new idea that we could propose to the engineering group. So I'm, at this point, I'm looking for your feedback on that as the Board of Selectmen to see which one of these might be most important to you as a group or, or if you have some completely other idea, having seen what the students are capable of, what you'd like to see us put forward as a potential project.
I really like the idea of the water extension. And secondly, would be the vibrant communities implementation. But I, I think if I were an engineering student, trying to get the water up the hill and around those corners would be enticing.
Not only that, but, you know, what the original proposal was, was basically to Manchester Water Company. Having a fresh set of eyes look at the same situation, perhaps with some alternatives that could be considerably less expensive and, and maybe make a project an affordable, viable project. And with that in mind, I, I, that's a project I would love to see them see and look at it, guys. Let's, let's, let's be innovative. That's what you're out there for. What, what you, what can you come up with that is effective and cost-effective? That's a simple parameter.
I, I agree. I think that's, you know, to entice our, one of our only commercial areas, you know, to more commercial development, I think is, makes perfect sense.
What is the, what is the status of being a hot pepper? Excuse me. Hot pepper.
Hot pepper. Pepper, yes.
What is the status of these new students and the proposed creations of the town hall?
That report is out on the town, their final report is out on the town website.
And we, we had, we had sent it all to you before we shared it with Sarah Nelson and her group who were working on the Heritage Farm project. So you should have had that individually in your inboxes at one point. And the, the, when we sent that to you, that actually included a, a virtual walkthrough of, you know, what, what, what they proposed, which I thought was actually quite cool. And so I think, you know, that's the kind of thing that, you know, we could take away from that project, you know, when in fact we try to bring something to the taxpayers for a vote. You know, if they get to virtually walk through, you know, what would be a new town hall. These, these students did some exciting things for us. So their report is concluded, it's finalized. And if you didn't find that, Bob, we can certainly help make sure that you get an opportunity to see that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did you, Bob, did you have a preference on one of these projects?
To the truth, I don't remember. Too many hot peppers.
Too many hot peppers.
Tim Miller, did you have any comments?
Um, no, I'd have to like read back through everything again. I'm sort of not fully remembering, so.
So right now it looks like I've got three of our members of Board of Selectmen would like me to propose to UConn engineering students that they work on providing a plan to bring water in from Manchester up through our business district on Route forty-four. So we'll, we'll write something up and, and get that to Professor Merrick and see if we can get that as a project for this upcoming student year.
Excellent.
And that, that's really all I have unless any of the selectmen have questions for me on any other topic that I might be able to answer questions for.
I just have one question. Is it the same students that will be continuing or it's a different?
Those, those students, the, the projects that they do are, are part of their capstone project, if you will. It's part of their graduation.
And so they've graduated.
Right, so we'll be working with an entire new group of students. Charles Merrick, I expect that Charles Merrick, who is the, the leader there, will continue on. He's the one that reached out to me. And I think you all met Professor Alexi Hayne, who was their project leader coordinator, who was a staff member at the University of Connecticut as well. So those two, I think, would be a constant. So the only thing that would change is the, the students themselves.
Got it. Thank you.
You bet. Well, I think I have my marching orders on that issue.
Is a motion to adjourn in order?
It certainly is.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved by Mike Aramita, seconded by Bob Moore to adjourn.
Petro's got his eye up, or eye.
Raised.
Good night, all.
Attention and your cooperation.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.